Thank you all for more or less coming on time. I do appreciate it. Article one. Oh, okay. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have to appoint counters in case we have to count tonight. So over in the first section on my far left, Mr. Moffett and Mrs. Corvo, if you come forward to be sworn in. In the middle, Mr. -- I'm going to say it wrong, Bouling? Bowling, Mr. Bowling. And you might as well take Mr. Stensel with you. And over on my right-hand side, Mrs. Gabry and Mrs. Kozak. Just want to give you a couple of reminders here. First of all, if you have a cellphone, please silence it or put it off. If you wish to address the meeting, it must be recognized by me. If you are reading one of the motions, please sign the first line before you read it and then pass it in to Mrs. Greenrow up here. The microphones are located to the right -- excuse me, to the front, one on the right and one on the left. Please use the microphone. Please identify yourself by name and precinct for the record. If you are making a motion to second the article, please keep your hand raised so we can get who seconded the article. And when it needs to be counted, we will ask you just to stand for the count to make sure it's accurate. There's only -- I think there's only one article to be counted, but two? There's two. Okay. Article one, to hear the report of the Finance Committee, other town offices, and committees, or act on anything relative thereto.
Thank you, Mrs. Stensel. And good evening. Thanks for everyone showing up basically on time. Fantastic. Finance Committee reports annual town meeting, 10/23/2018. Good evening. When we last met in May 2018, the Red Sox were the best team in baseball, and they still Town Meeting actually approved the $60 million budget for fiscal '19, which included a tax levy increase estimated at almost 1.5%. Proposed significant revisions to that budget before you tonight include 104,000 in net additions to Article Two, which is our operating budget. In addition, approval is requested to use a total of 731,000 in eligible free cash, including adding $300,000 to the stabilization fund, $100,000 to OPEB liability trust fund, $100,000 for new playground equipment at Franklin Park in the Boyce Street tot lot, $150,000 to begin resurfacing, reconstructing municipal parking lots, $47,200 for rehabilitation of the Leesville Pond Dam area, and $33,500 for the municipal website replacement. After recalculating expected revenue sources, including final cherry sheet contributions from Beacon Hill, the proposed budget is now $67 million point four, which includes a tax levy increase of only 0.8%. Let me underline, that's less than 1%. Regarding the warrant articles, the Finance Committee takes the following positions. All articles except Article 14, we recommend approval, including Article Seven, which we voted on tonight. Article 14, we defer to the petitioners due to its initial non-financial impact. I have just a few brief comments on certain articles. Article Two increases the operating budget by 104,000. The largest increases are $25,000 each in salt and calcium. In Medicare accounts, a $20,000 increase in gas, oil, diesel account, a $15,000 increase in insurance and bonds, and a $14,000 increase in solid waste collection. The Finance Committee recommends approval. The second article on -- just a comment on is Article Seven, which requests to repurpose $51,000 from unexpended bond proceeds to the Police Department for multiple purposes not already designated in their capital improvement budget. These funds became available after the successful completion of multiple projects' purposes resulting in surplus balances. The Finance Committee also recommends approval of these. Respectfully submitted, Kevin Hesse, Chair, Ian Cavanagh, Vice Chair, Ed Coleman, Kim Holstrom, Mallory O'Brien, Kevin Kennedy, and Trevor Sansucci. Thank you.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, Town Meeting members. Articles five, six, nine, and 12 use free cash and were unanimously supported by the Board of Selectmen. This is another instance where the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee worked together to develop strong financial policies. These policies are working, and we thank Town Meeting for the work on these and other articles tonight. The Board of Selectmen makes the following recommendations on the special Town Meeting warrant. Articles two through 14, the Board of Selectmen recommends approval. Submitted by the Auburn Board of Selectmen, myself, Kenneth A. Holstrom, Vice Chairman, Daniel S. Carpenter, Member, Lionel Arbuthnot, Member, and Tristan J. La Liberty, Member.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Welcome, members of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, School Committee, and Town Meeting members. I thank you for the opportunity to provide just a very brief update tonight. The School Department is not asking for any monies from you, but did want to take this opportunity to thank you for your ongoing support. Those of us in the Auburn Public Schools take very seriously our responsibility to serve the students in the community of Auburn. Typically, my presentations to you talk about the academic program, but I thought tonight we would talk about some of the softer skills, some of the things that we really try to instill in our students. Hopefully, some of you saw, if not all of you, the presentation that came on WCVV recently. Auburn High School was recognized for having the number-one unified sports program in all of Massachusetts. This is a program whereby our most -- This is a program whereby our most special children are paired up with their typical peers and engage in athletic activities. And if you have not come to a game, I encourage you to do so. It really is a wonderful, wonderful experience. Being good citizens is something else that we value in the Auburn Public Schools. You see here two examples of that at Swanson Road. They received recognition for their random acts of kindness in the last three school years. And then you see on the right are some shining stars at Bryn Mawr School for being especially good students. Community service, we believe in giving back. We so appreciate the support that we get from Town Meeting as well as from the Auburn community in general, and we believe in giving back, and we try to do so in myriad ways. Sportsmanship awards. So it's great when our kids get wins. We hope the Red Sox get one tonight. But when the kids show sportsmanlike behavior and are recognized for that, we're especially proud of them. Most recently, our middle school girls' field hockey team played Oxford. Didn't have enough players to field a team, so some of our players joined them, and then actually Oxford beat us with some of our team members playing. The Fine Arts Program that we have is really second to none. It has grown exponentially over the years and gives children an outlet to really express their creative channels. But none of this could happen without the incredibly supportive parents that we have across the community, the dedicated staff who give so much of themselves day in and day out, and then the community support that we receive, including from all of you here. This being a picture from the Strategic Plan World Cafe just last school year. All of this work that we do is in service to the amazing students that we have. We are currently undergoing a NEASC evaluation here at the high school. People have been visiting since Sunday and will leave tomorrow, and we look forward to sharing that report with you soon. So again, I take this opportunity on behalf of the Auburn School Committee to thank you, Town Meeting members, for your ongoing support and to commit that we will continue to do all that we can to make you proud and certainly each of our students. So thank you very much.
Article Two. The CFT Town Meeting will vote to amend Article Three of the May 1st, 2018 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Increase line item number 011-552-5305 MIS hardware slash software from $118,120 to Increase line item number 011-611-51122, state certification stipend from nothing -- zero to $1,000. Increase line item number 011-612-542102, miscellaneous supplies from $770 to $1,170. Increase line item number 011-622-542102, supplies from $10,350 to $11,550. Increase line item number 011-992-5740, insurance and bonds from $785,000 to $800,000. Increase line item number 011-992-5480, gas slash oil slash diesel from $180,000 to $200,000. Increase line item number 01303-5691, Norfolk assessment from $62,149 to $63,682. Increase line item number 014250-553302, salt and calcium from $232,000 to $257,000. Increase line item number 014332-5293, solid waste collection from $724,356 to $738,356. Increase line item number 019101-5178 Medicare from $465,000 to $490,000. And further to approve an amended budget for fiscal year 2019 for the Town of Auburn of $63,222,112, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Kim Holstrom, Precinct Five. I move that the Town Meeting vote to amend Article Three of the May 1st, 2018 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Increase line item 011-552-5305 MIS software hardware from $118,120 to $118,870. Increase line item 011-611-511122, state certification stipend from zero to 1,000. Increase line item 011-612-542102, miscellaneous supplies from $770 to $1,170. Increase line item 011-622-542102, supplies from $10,350 to $11,550. Increase line item 011-992-5740, insurance and bonds from $785,000 to $800,000. Increase line item 011-992-5480, gas, oil, diesel from $180,000 to $200,000. Increase line item 01303-5691, Norfolk assessment from $62,149 to $63,682. Increase line item 014250-553302, salt and calcium from $232,000 to $257,000. Increase line item 014332-5293, solid waste collection from $724,356 to $738,356. Increase line item 01101-5178 Medicare from $465,000 to $490,000. And further to approve an amended FY 2019 budget for the Town of Auburn of $63,222,112.
Good evening, everyone. Ed Kazanovich, Assistant Town Manager and Chief Financial Officer. I have about a 45-minute presentation, so I hope you don't give me the evil eye. I'm going to try to get through it in about four and a half minutes. So I want to create a bridge from where we were at the conclusion of the annual town meeting to where we are tonight. So here's a snapshot of our total revenue adjustments that allows us to bring 14 warrant articles and appropriate some supplemental appropriation and looking for your approval tonight. On the local receipt side, since May and since the actuals came in, we are recommending an additional revenue of $391,000 and change. The cherry sheet numbers are now final. That gave us an additional $112,405. We're actually reducing the amount we're raising through taxation, through real estate and personal property tax. We're reducing that by $163,000 and change. And available funds, which is primarily made up, and I have a supporting schedule for this, an additional $777,550, primarily made up of free cash. Here are the adjustments for the local receipts. In the far-right-hand column under FY 2018, we used estimates at the annual town meeting. These are now actual numbers. I estimated receipts came in about 1.4 million more than estimated for FY 18. That gave us some flexibility to use some additional local receipts to fund the FY 19 budget. I could tell you that that allows it -- by using that allows us to reduce the level of taxation that we bill out through real estate and personal property. Here's the cherry sheet state aid. As I said, these numbers are final. The final version was released probably mid-July. That gave us an additional $112,405. On the tax levy side, you can see the reduction of $163,000 and change. We are using approximately 88.13% of the levy and would be taxing at a rate of, as the Chairman of the Finance Committee said, just under eight tenths of 1%. We'd be taxing about 31.5% out of a possible 2.5. So that's good news. So we haven't taxed to 2.5 as allowed for the past nine years. These are the available funds. Total is $777,000 and change. As you can see, free cash makes up $730,700 of that. $40,000 is coming from overlay surplus that was certified through the Assessors Office and some minor adjustments that are funding some various warrant articles tonight. Here are the warrant articles. Was stated earlier, $103,883 under Article Two. You have the warrant before you listing all the other articles through Article 13. You will be asked tonight to appropriate $891,133. Other amounts that we have to raise on the recap, we had a SORMA break that we had a petition to Department of Revenue on to deficit spend in FY 18. That deficit was carried over. We have to raise that on the recap sheet through user fees. We also had some adjustments in addition to the cherry sheet state aid. There are state charges, assessments, and offsets that changed our estimates in the final version of the budget, giving us $1,117,988.04 for additional appropriations. That's the same amount of increase on the revenue side. As you can see, total appropriations, 891. Other amounts to be raised, $183,986 and change in store enterprise and cherry sheet charges and assessments of $42,869, giving us an offset of appropriations equal to that of revenue of $1,117,988.04. Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting members, that concludes my presentation. I hope I was four and a half minutes or under. And happy to answer any questions at this time, if there are any.
Any questions? Not seeing any, then? All those opposed to Article Two, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Article Two, please raise your hand. It's a unanimous vote. Article Three. The CFT Town Meeting will vote to appropriate $1,850 from the state primary election account, number 251-007-5700, for an updated assessment on records management or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Yes?
Mr. Moderator, William Byham, Precinct Two, Article Three. I move that the Town Meeting vote to appropriate $1,850 from the state primary election account, number 251-007-5700, for an updated assessment on records management.
Is there a second? Any questions on this? Not seeing any, then? All those opposed, please raise your hand. All those in favor? It's a unanimous vote. Article Four. The CFT Town Meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $9,700 from general revenue funds for turnout gear, washing machines, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Joe Martin, Precinct Two. I move that the Town Meeting vote to appropriate the sum of $9,700 from general fund revenues for turnout gear, washing machines.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any, then? All those opposed, please raise your hands. Is there a question? No, okay. All those in favor? Thank you. It's a unanimous vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Eric Addison, Precinct Three. Is there a way we could just hear these motions once and then act on them versus hearing them twice in the interest of time?
Well, to tell you the truth, most of them are both three lines long. The too-long ones you see in there are not reading. And nobody else is reading.
Is it a matter of procedure or is there just a way that we could just hear that once? I mean, we have copies of them, we hear it from you, then we hear it again. Mr. Kazanovich?
I think because the moderator is reading the warrant articles, I think it would be acceptable if anyone who is making the motion states as read by the moderator.
Thank you. Article Five. The CFT Town Meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $300,000 from free cash to the Town Stabilization Fund or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion on Article Five? Yes?
Ian Cavanagh, Precinct Five. As read by the moderator. Finished? That's it? All right.
You have a second? Excuse me?
Ian Cavanagh, Precinct Five. I move as read by the moderator.
Thank you. Question? Mr. Dufour?
Sir, I have a second.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Joe Lyons, Precinct Three. Could someone just give a brief description of what this would be used for?
We couldn't hear what you said.
Could I just please have a brief description of what that means?
Sure. This is, in essence, this is a rainy day fund for the town. It's being appropriated out of free cash, which is certified by the Department of Revenue, which is really surplus net profit at the end of the fiscal year, which is cumulative. This is set aside for any unforeseen future capital expense that the town feels as though it wants to draw on. It does require a majority vote to put it in. It's a two-thirds vote to take it out. Any other questions? Not seeing any, then? All those opposed, raise your hands. All those in favor? It's a unanimous vote. Article Seven is a two-thirds vote, by the way. The CFT Town will vote to repurpose the following unexpended bond --
Six.
What? Oh, six, okay. To see if the Town Meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 from free cash to the Town OPEB, other post-employment benefits liability trust fund or act on anything relative thereto.
Larry Chacolo, Precinct Three. I move the Town Meeting on the motion as read by the moderator.
Second. Any questions? Not seeing any? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Article Seven is a two-thirds vote. The CFT -- Excuse me? Oh. Just say that again? We just did Article Six.
If the moderator please say the result of the vote.
Oh, it was unanimous. It was unanimous. The CFT Town Meeting will vote to repurpose the following unexpended bond proceeds as it is printed in the Town Warrant for Article Seven for the October 23rd Special Town Meeting. Is there a motion?
Ellen Ethea, Precinct --
Ellen Ethia, Precinct 5. I moved at the town meeting vote to repurpose unexpected bond proceeds as printed in the October 23, 2018 special town meeting warrant totaling $51,302.25 for police replaced weapons, $46,702.39, and police accident reconstruction equipment, $4,599.86.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? When we do, all those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Unanimous vote. Article 8, the CFT town will vote to appropriate $40,000 from overlay surplus for miscellaneous buildings, facilities, capital improvements, town hall improvements, $25,000, West Street bias improvements, $5,000, oiler conversion, $10,000, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Proudie.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 8, as read by the moderator, be approved.
Is there a second? Would you bring that up here, Mr. Proudie? Thank you. Is there a second? There's plenty of seconds. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, raise your hands. All those opposed? Article 8, the CFT... That's nine, I'm sorry. It is nine, I just sort of put the wrong number down. The CFT town meeting will vote to appropriate $33,500 from free cash for the purchase of modern websites for the town of Auburn, Auburn Fire Rescue Department, Auburn Public Library, and Packer Chog Golf Course, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, Frank Bowling, Precinct 4. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $33,500 from free cash for the purchase of modern websites for the town of Auburn, Auburn Fire Rescue Department, Auburn Public Library, and Packer Chog Golf Course.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any? All those in favor, raise your hands. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 10, the CFT town meeting will vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for new playground equipment at Franklin Park in the Boy Street Tote Lot, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Mrs. Corbo.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for new playground equipment at Franklin Park and the Boy Street Tote Lot.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? We have a question in the back. Yes, come up to the mic, please. Come to the mic, please, mister.
Steven Lindbergh, Precinct 4. Quick notation, Franklin sees a ton of use, I get that. Live in the neighborhood, I think the Boy Street Tote Lot is maybe a quarter, maybe a half mile away. We used to use it when our kids were growing up. It wasn't much there. I don't see it being used. I'm just scratching my head on that one. That's all. It's nowhere near as versatile as Franklin Park. That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, after the Boy Street School was torn down, the town meeting voted to approve the Tote Lot, and it came into play about 1980. And it's my understanding that most of the equipment that's there, and I hear this from the neighbors, is the original equipment from 1980. There are still a lot of young children in that neighborhood. They can use that Tote Lot, they need that Tote Lot, and we should do what the article says.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ready for the question? All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your hands. All those opposed? I have one opposed. What? Oh, I'm sorry. You've got to raise your hands high, I can't see from here. I got you, Steve. One, two, three, four. Four, that's what I got. Up in the back, we're not counting. Thank you, four. Thank you. Article 11. Oh, what's... Article 11, the CFT town meeting will vote to appropriate $150,000 from free cash to resurface or reconstruct municipal parking lots, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Yes?
Roberta Baker, Precinct 3. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $150,000 from free cash to resurface or reconstruct municipal parking lots.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? I have one opposed. It is a vote. Article 13, 12. Article 12, the CFT town meeting will vote to appropriate $47,200 from free cash to provide grant matching funds for the rehabilitation of Leesville Pond Dam, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Baker?
Charlie Vega, Precinct 3. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $47,200 from free cash to provide grant matching funds for the rehabilitation of Leesville Pond Dam.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions?
Doug Nelson, Precinct 2. I know lately there's been a movement to tear down a lot of dams for fisheries, et cetera, and I don't know if the state is thinking of anything like that, but I just wonder if the town would consider that. Thank you.
Mr. Coyle.
Mr. Moderator, that's something that we haven't considered. I think we'd have extreme opposition to doing that.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have one opposed. It is a vote. Article 13, the CFT town meeting will vote to appropriate $5,000 from available funds, dog licenses, number 261018, to the kennel revolving account, number 2470-4840, as seed money for the purpose of animal care, veterinary medical expenses, and maintenance, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, Mary Ellen Paquette, Precinct 2. I move Article 13 as read by the moderator.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Unanimous vote. Article 14, the CFT town meeting will vote to amend the town of Auburn zoning bylaws by adding new solar bylaws as printed in the warrant for October 23, 2018 special town meeting, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, Andrew Paquette, Precinct 2. I move at the town meeting vote to amend Article 14 as read by the moderator.
Is there a second? There is a second. Anybody have a question on this?
Well, Precinct 1, I noticed that it has something to do with roof mounted. And as we all know, there's a sign outside of most solar collectors that if you turn the switch off, those panels may not be off. There'll still be electricity in them. And I'm concerned with what safety standards we've established in town to protect our town employees and the residents and the homeowners. We know of all the fires in New England where the fire departments have been stymied and are finding new ways to fight fires with solar collectors on the roof, where they can't even punch a hole in it because the solar collectors are placed so close together. I'm not going to go into all the details and all the questions I have, but that's basically it. It's about the safety of firefighters and the citizens and how the bylaw reflects that. I'm not seeing much of that in there. Thank you.
Mr. Benoit.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Matthew Benoit, town planner. This bylaw is written for the use only. This isn't going to govern the nuances about how the things operate. That will be done under the building permit, but otherwise, this is just to govern the use in certain zones throughout town.
Thank you.
Ellen Ethia, Precinct 5. I find this kind of ironic that we're looking at bylaws for solar farms when we've approved two of them already. So my question is on Section 3.10.9.1, which is called setbacks. And so if we're putting these solar farms in residential areas, I think we need to protect the residents. There is one that's going up on Lester Street, and there will be panels 20 feet off the boundary line from one home. I don't think that's fair. When people buy a house in a residential area, they don't expect to have a solar farm put in next door. So I think we need to create something like a buffer zone, maybe 100 feet around the edge of the solar farms, so that there is some distance between the solar farm and the people who live in the neighborhood. And I only think that's fair. And so I don't know how to go about writing an amendment for this, because this is very vague. It just says refer back to Section 5.4, but I think we need to do something to protect those people who live in residential neighborhoods who now have a solar farm as a neighbor. Thank you.
So there were a couple of questions there. Number one, with the solar arrays that were already approved in town, those were able to be approved in town because we didn't have a solar bylaw to govern the use. Regarding the buffering and screening, there is a provision in there for buffering, but there's also a landscape bylaw in our bylaws already, and these would be at the governance of the planning board during site design, and the planning board could ask for increased screening on a per-project basis.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Ethia then.
Excuse me, on the part about the planning board could. Can't we set it up so they should? That's what I'm asking. I'm asking to protect the residents who live in these neighborhoods. I live on Lester Street, there's one on Lester Street. Around the corner, there's another one on Rochdale Street. So we have two of them in our neighborhoods already. Can't we protect our neighbors by saying that they have to put at least a 100-foot buffer zone in? Not could, but should. So how do I go about making an amendment?
So regarding the buffer as-is, the whole point of site design is for the planning board to have discretion over a project. Any solar array could be located in an area that may or may not have residential neighbors. In that case, it wouldn't require a 100-foot buffer. In the case that it does, the planning board would be able to use their better judgment to decide that they may require a 100-foot buffer if there's a resident right on top of it. But not every site is the same. As we see, even though one that was approved on Rochdale Street, there's a direct neighbor that was absolutely for the project and didn't want a buffer at the meeting. So it's a case-by-case basis. We think that the original setbacks were good for landscape buffers, and if it's closer to a neighborhood, we expect the abutters who are going to get a notice in the mail about the project to come to the meeting and voice their concerns so that the board has the right information to create such buffer zones.
I watch those meetings. And the gentleman on Lester Street said, but it's 20 feet off my boundary. And they thought that because they were going to put some screening trees and whatever, that was enough. That's not fair. He didn't buy or build a house in a neighborhood to have that as a neighbor. You know, and I have power lines across my backyard, I have the railroad, that's my neighbor. I understand having utilities around you, but I think that we need to take care of our neighborhoods and the people who live in these areas.
No, it's all great concerns, and I really appreciate the questions. I was at the meeting, obviously, as the town planner, and if it's a resident I'm thinking of, they're at least almost 300 feet away from this thing. They were looking for screening on a forest that already exists on their property, so they already have a screen in that case. But on a case-by-case basis, that one didn't even have a bylaw to govern whether or not we could put screening. So this one at least give us that opportunity.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Tom Cass, Precinct 4. I was just kind of looking for a clarification. In Section 310.2 for applicability, 310.1 states that non-residential use doesn't have to apply to the section, but requires a building permit. On the previous page, however, Section 3948 seems to give a blanket approval to that. I was curious what the utility of the building permit was in that particular case.
Sure, we're talking about small-scale ground-mounted under 310. So those would just require a building permit, they wouldn't need site plan review or anything to that effect.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Tom Dufour, Precinct 5. I just think in light of some of the concerns that have come up, especially like Mrs. Ethia's concerns, I'd like to propose a motion to pass this article by until the next town
Tom, you have to write that down, please.
Just want to let everyone know that currently the planning board, or the planning office has received another solar farm application, and it is off of Lester Street again. And that application will not be subject to this bylaw because it came in before the bylaw is passed. If we don't pass this bylaw all the way through May, this is when solar developers try to get their projects approved in the winter so that they can start in the spring. We wait till the spring, you take the risk of other developers trying to develop more solar projects throughout the winter.
Okay, Mr. Dufour's motion is I propose to pass by Article 14, pass by Article 14 of the October 23, 2018 special town meeting. Now, is there a second? I propose to pass by Article 14 of the October 23, 2018 special town meeting until the May 2019 annual town meeting. Now, is there a second? Is there a second? Questions on passing it by? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Greg Bowling, Precinct 4. I was wondering if Mr. Benoit could describe the process that went about in creating this bylaw through the, I believe, the zoning bylaw review committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Bowling, the zoning bylaw review committee worked on this bylaw since 2016. We took model bylaws from four or five other communities, including guidance from the Department of Energy Resources, DOER released guidelines in August of 2014 for us to follow. We took a lot of that, boohooed, ran off, worked on this for a period of almost two years. And the bylaw review committee went back and forth between a lot of different things, especially special permit versus site plan review in different zones in town, and a lot of the other pieces, applicability and separability, and some of the environmental pieces of this as well. So the process, five residents, several of which are a part of this meeting here tonight, that put a lot of effort into this as well over two years, was also reviewed by town council and other members of town departments that will be affected by this bylaw. And the planning board did vote to pass this unanimously, 401. The one member was a member of the bylaw review committee that abstained.
Thank you. Yes, question?
Mr. Moderator, Tom Healy, Precinct 5. I appreciate all the work that's been done to generate this proposed bylaw. Could you explain to the town meeting members what the follow-up will be to address the concerns we raised tonight prior to the May meeting?
Sure. I think Mrs. Ethia raises a good point about buffering and landscaping. That could be a floor amendment even tonight, or that could be an amendment in May, and once we get a bylaw in place just to govern other solar projects. If it wants to be amended to increase the buffer size in May, I'm certainly receptive to that idea.
Thank you. Yes, sir, up and about.
Michael Maron, Precinct 3. This bylaw, this proposed bylaw, represents a layer of protection for the town that we don't currently have. It may not be perfect, but we are without that protection. It's an unnecessary risk to move forward with applications for solar in this town without this layer of protection. I would ask town meeting members to join me and consider approving this bylaw tonight so that we can move forward. We can move forward to amend it. But what we've seen in some of the neighborhoods already is the insertion of some of these solar farms without any layer of control because we don't have a current bylaw. That's what our bylaws do. They add a level of protection for the town in consideration. So I'd ask you to consider passing this bylaw tonight so that we can move forward with that layer of protection. Thank you.
Mr. Martin.
Joe Martin, Precinct 2. So did I understand you correctly that you would be amendable to an amendment, including a buffer zone tonight?
That is an option.
So if we vote down postponing this question and go to the motion, you would consider that amendment?
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we move the question.
Joe, what was your motion again? We wanted to get the wording straight here. The motion was to move the question. You've only moved in the amendment, I believe. Okay? We still have to vote on the main motion after that. Joe, you didn't write that. I thought you had one. Okay, all those in favor of postponing Article 14, please raise your hands. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, are we voting first on moving the question?
The amendment.
No, no, no. The motion was made to move the question. We have to vote to move the question, then we vote on my motion to pass by. And then if that fails, then we would vote on the proposed bylaw change, is my understanding.
If this passes, Tom, then we're going back to the, we're going to voting on it. We have to move the question first. That's all we're doing. We're not, okay. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed to moving the question? Well, I see one, two, three, four, five hands up.
I know I made it, but I'm kind of confused with what you're saying. What I want to do is to vote on whether we're going to postpone this article or not. That's the fact that I'm moving, with Mr. Dufour's amendment.
We have to work on the amendment first, Joe.
That's what I'm asking you to do, is to vote on the amendment right now to move that.
I think there were four people opposed to moving it, I believe, but... Why don't we just count the whole thing now? All those in favor, just raise your hand of moving it, please, and keep them up. Our counters have to count? Excuse me? The amendment, yes. We're moving the amendment. All those in favor of moving the amendment? Then we do the postpone after that. I just want, all those, I just don't want to say it passed and people are going to do it. Yes, Joe?
If I rescind my motion, will you rescind yours and we'll get back to the question?
We're on one motion. Did you rescind your motion, Joe? Fine, put that in writing, please. Now we're back to the question. Here's Tom.
Mr. Moderator, in that case, in the interest of clarity, can I withdraw my motion to pass it by? Then I so withdraw my motion.
Article 14. Mrs. Ethia.
I'd like to make an amendment. I move that the town meeting vote to increase the buffer zone to 100 feet on solar farms.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I ask for clarity? Is the 100 feet on frontage, side yard setback, or rear yard setback?
Greg Bowling, Precinct 4. I tried to get this in before the amendment was proposed, but I'm going to recommend that we not try to amend this bylaw at this meeting tonight, and we instead wait for either the May town meeting or a special town meeting before then because we're not going to write with the correct language. It's going to get shot down by council. It's going to get shot down by the state attorney general's office, and then we're not going to have a functioning bylaw at that point. So if we could please just vote against that amendment, vote to approve the amendment as written, and then we can immediately start writing an appropriate amendment to that bylaw that increases the setback, taking into account which residential zones versus commercial zones, taking into account which sides of the proper buffers, the whole process. That is an entire process that has to be gone through, and we're not going to do it tonight. Thank you.
Steve Lindberg, Precinct 4. Ditto. And thank you for all the work you've done on this. And I love the fact that you said, you know, if it doesn't work, if we want, we can come back at the next meeting and recommend an amendment.
Yes, sir.
Can I also move the question, move this thing to vote now?
We're ready for a vote, Steve.
For us, we're going to vote on the amendment. Well, we have to vote on this amendment. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your hands. All those opposed? I don't see anybody opposed. It's a vote. Now on the amendment, I move that the town meeting vote to increase the buffer zone to 100 feet on solar farms on all four sides. All those in favor, please raise, any questions, I should say, first of all? Not seeing any? All those in favor, raise your hands. I see all those opposed? It is a vote. The amendment is defeated. Now back to the original one, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend the Town of Auburn zoning bylaws by adding what we have in the warrant. Any more questions?
Back when Mr. Martin and the other fellow canceled each other's amendments out and withdrew, it was on contingent that there's going to be an amendment coming from this end? Is that correct? Not tonight. Okay. And Matt, you did say there's some protections in there for some of the issues that the woman over here had in the current zoning bylaws and the current planning bylaws?
Not the current bylaws, but this draft, yes.
Okay. In the one that we're going to be voting on now?
Correct.
Okay. So her concerns with setbacks and whether or not it is, may do it or must do it, is that considered in this bylaw?
The buffers are required, but they're at the discretion of the planning board in this language. So that can be rewritten, re-brought to the zoning bylaw review committee over the winter and brought back to May town meeting.
Well, it strongly suggests that it be less discretionary. It should be more cut and, you know, dry. But with that, I move the question.
Charlie Baker, Precinct 3. Going along with what Matt's been saying, and we do vote this tonight, and then work will be done to make some changes, could we insist this at town meeting, since town officials are supposed to come to town meeting, that we have people from the planning board and from the people who work on this proposal at the annual town meeting?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, the town manager just wanted me to mention that there are several members of the zoning bylaw review committee here today, including a planning board member.
Thank you. We're voting right now, I believe, I hope, to either approve or disapprove of this bylaw. All those in favor of this bylaw, please raise your hands. All those opposed, please raise your hands. I have one over there, and that's all I say, the bylaw passes. I'll take a motion now to dissolve.